Green is blurred.
Broadcast has been set.
Okay, thanks so much. Actually should have, okay, there we go. All right. Thank you so much for Adleyan. The time is now five oh four P M. And the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. Good evening and welcome to the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Chair and Member of the Board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions from our committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff, then board office staff, and then our board legal counsel. So I'll turn it over to our board members first and then others that have joined us.
Hi, everyone. I am Lolita E. Walker. I am the Vice Chair of the Board of Education and a member of the Policy and Governance Committee. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you so much for tuning in.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Juanita Miller and I'm driving, so I will be off camera, but I will be participating and thank you for your participation tonight.
Hello, everyone. My name is Judy McInnes Murray. I'm Chair of the Prince George's County School Board and I'm an ex-official member of this committee.
All right.
Hello, everyone. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
I think Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you want to introduce.
Absolutely, Revell D. Fitzpatrick. He may, excuse my camera. Thank you, everyone, the millions of people who are watching.
Board Office Staff?
Hello, everyone. Cindy Adlan, Administration Secretary to the Board Office and Support Staff to the Policy and Governance Committee.
And last but certainly not least, our Board Legal Counsel.
Thank you. Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. Dennis Whitley the Third. I'm a partner at the law firm of Shipley and Horn and we are Board Legal Counsel.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you so much for joining. We're going to now move on to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. The question is on adopting the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. It's been moved in seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The May seventh, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda is adopted. We're now going to move on to item one point four, Approval of the Committee Meeting Minutes. The question is on approving the April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Minutes. Is there a second?
I second the minute for April twenty-third.
It's been moved in seconded. Thank you so much. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee Minutes are approved. We're now going to move on to item two point O, Public Comment and Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video, audio, or written. Tonight, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. But there is one written public comment from Ameer Ward. She's a student, four-day school week. And the written comment can be found on Board Docs. And so we want to thank you so much, Ameer, for writing in. We, as board members, look forward to reading and responding to your letter that you share with us. So with that being said, thank you all for your participation. And I do just want to kind of continue to solicit participation from the public around our public comment. We're now going to move on to item three point O, Legislative Updates, and we'll move to item three point one. And Mrs. Welsh, I think you might have a presentation for our soon-to-be-finished legislative updates. If not, that is fine, but just want to see if there's anything.
No, just to say that we're still waiting for the superintendent, waiting for the, oh, my gosh, I just lost it. Thank you, the governor, waiting for the governor to sign the rest of the bills. He did sign, he's had two days of signings. And now he will sign again on Thursday and then on the sixteenth, and that should wrap up all of the bills that were presented to him. People are pretty much estimating that he will probably sign all of the bills, but there will be no veto. If he doesn't sign, he'll just let it pass through as law, but will not be any vetoes of those bills.
Great. And, you know, for those members of the public, if you're really anxious and you're like, oh, I don't want to wait until the next P and G, we are going to have a presentation at our Thursday Board Meeting at seven P M., where we'll kind of walk through some of those bills that the governor signed that align with our legislative platform. So more to come soon this week while we're pending additional signage of those bills. We're going to move on to item four point O, Discussion Items. There are four items for discussion. Each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. And so we're going to move to item four point one, which is Policy thirty-three twenty-three, Purchasing. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to, sorry about that, to provide an update on Policy thirty-three twenty-three, Purchasing. Thanks so much, Mrs. Welsh.
Okay, so the purchasing policy, we actually did make major revisions to this policy, I want to say, probably about a year ago. And we ended up deciding that we needed to bring, actually, August, the twenty-two hundred, two thousand twenty-two, is when we had made major revisions to this policy. This is a little over a year, a little over a year and a half. So the reason this came back up, though, was because last year, House Bill five forty-three passed and during the twenty-two, twenty twenty-three legislative session. And one of the things that Bill did was up the limit. Originally, it was fifty thousand dollars for any item that was under equipment, materials, services, or supplies. Anything under fifty thousand, you did not have to do a formal bid, but anything above fifty thousand, you had to do a formal bid. And so House Bill five forty-three actually increased that limit to a hundred thousand. So we had put that on the work plan to bring back, bring this policy back so that we could make that revision and increase that limit to what is now sitting in the law. However, I wanted to point out, though, that I did go ahead and share this with our Director of Purchasing prior to this meeting to get any input. Thinking, you know, they've had it for a year and a half, operating with it, and maybe there are things that have come to light that need to be a little better clarified or something. So she, there are some definite revisions you'll see up, which I'm going to address as we go through the policy that she has shared. And what she did share with me, she was unable to come this evening, but she said she would be glad to come to the next policy meeting to go in more detail with this policy, if you would like, or to answer any questions you might have related to purchasing. So certainly, we can decide that, you know, after we go through the policy. So this, so this policy, the purchasing, the policy statement for this purchasing policy talks about the fact that we, the board does recognize the importance of highly competitive bidding to maximize efficient and effective purchasing, to get the best value, to meet the operational, educational needs of the students in Prince George's County Public Schools. And also encourages all active participation from the business community to be a part of this whole process when we're, you know, putting out a proposal and then trying to attract the best pricing, the highest quality, the timely delivery, and innovative solutions to any of the things that we're working on. So the purpose of the policy is to identify standards and approvals necessary to ensure that the funds provided to PGPS for material supplies, equipment, services, contract administration, and contractual services are expended and handled most effectively, prudently, and efficiently. And that the school administration and office supervisors obtain goods, equipment, and services essential for the effective operation of the school system. So this is a really important policy because it goes to the core of the operation of the school system. And if you were to look at the list of contractors that, approved contractors that the school system has, it's pretty amazing how many people we do contract out, or businesses we contract out to get services or goods to operate this school system. So I just, I'm going to just hit on a couple definitions that I think are important to keep in your mind. And one has to do with when you have formal bids. So a formal bid is something that someone would offer in response to open competitive bidding through either two processes, invitation for bid or request for proposal. So invitation for bid is a sealed bidding process for the procurement of complex goods and services. That includes formal advertisements, specifications, conditions for particular purchase, predetermined date, time for public bid opening. And it's usually operated, it's usually awarded on a low-price basis. Then we also have the request for proposal, which is commonly known as RFP. And that's, again, a formal solicitation of proposals, usually for services. It's not publicly opened. And this is, this procurement process, though, is looking at the price balanced against the quality of the services that you receive. So awards may be based upon the highest-rated evaluated proposal concerning the technical and financial merits of the requirement or the lowest-priced technically acceptable proposal. Meaning that if, in fact, you have two people that have put in proposals, or two companies that have put in proposals, and one is a little bit more expensive than the other. But when you look at the, how technically acceptable the proposal is and what it has to offer, it, for the good of the system, it might be better to go for a higher technically acceptable proposal and pay just a little bit more than going for a lower-priced proposal that might only meet acceptable standards for what is being requested. And so that's important in terms of just the whole process of when we decide on different proposals and companies. So then, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder and offerer means you're looking, of course, for the lowest price. And then responsible means a person or entity that has capability in all respects to fully perform all aspects of the contract within integrity and reliability. And then you have responsive, which means that bid or proposal has been submitted in response to an invitation for bids or request for proposals. We'll also see it within the policy language related to professional services. And when we're talking about that, what we're actually talking about is services like legal, technology, financial services that are usually provided by licensed professionals. And then, of course, you'll see specifications or purchasing description, and that's really a precise description of the physical and functional characteristics of a product, good, or construction item. It really just gives you all the very specifics of what it is that you're contracting for. So as far as the standards, if you can scroll down to number four, which is on page two, Cindy. It starts with the first thing is equipment, materials, services, or supplies. And this is the, this is the area where, when House Bill five forty-three passed last year, that is, this is the area that applies as far as now setting the threshold up to a hundred thousand. And it's called, in Comar, it's referenced as the Small Value Procurement Threshold. So they have moved that threshold from fifty thousand up to a hundred thousand, and that's for your equipment, materials, services, and supplies. And what that means is that it's not necessary, it's not necessary that you, if it's under that one hundred thousand mark, it's not necessary to go through the process of a formal bid. But if, in fact, you do reach that one hundred thousand, you either, you've exceeded that one hundred thousand, then you would have to contract for that purchase through a formal bid process, which is required in the law. So then, as far as invitations for bids, and I think I sort of reviewed this back in the definitions. But if the, if you, if there's any reason why you can't award to the lowest responsible bidder, then the recommendation shall be approved by the board prior to awarding the contract. So that's important so that you know that the, and when you're getting contracts coming in at above a hundred, one hundred thousand above, that if, in fact, that they are not going to award it to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, then that contract must come to the board for full approval. As far as requests for proposals, the, for, if it can't be awarded, the RFP can't be awarded to the highest-rated technically acceptable proposal or the lowest-priced technically acceptable proposal, then the award recommendation, again, shall be approved by the board prior to awarding the contract. So these are all, these are the two situations in which this particular category must come to the board once it reaches that one hundred thousand mark. And then, anything that is not, that doesn't reach the one hundred thousand mark, any of the other contractual actions that do occur for items under one hundred thousand, then what they have included, and this is new language, that all contract actions for the above category shall be reported to the board on a biannual basis. So instead of just bringing them in randomly, like each board meeting or something, saying, you know, we did this, 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 you would actually receive a report on a biannual basis. And this is a recommendation from Purchasing that would show, that would list out all the contract actions. And then, also, the superintendent is responsible for reporting any non-construction contract modifications exceeding the one hun, you know, excuse me, exceeding the small procurement value threshold of a biannual, on a biannual basis. And that's for the one hundred thousand. And then the construction-related contract modifications or options exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand should be reported to the board at the time. So just to make sure we're clear, because this is, this is like heavy language, is that if it's non-construction, which are the items we talked about previously, and it exceeds that threshold of a hundred thousand, then they're going to be, then they're women. They are going to be reporting that on a biannual basis. But if it's construction-related and they have to do contract modifications that exceed two hundred and fifty thousand, it should be reported to the board as it's occurring prior to it happening. Then, exceptions to this rule are you have instructional materials or supplies. And when the anticipated purchase price of a specific instructional material supply is less than two million, then the superintendent's designee shall contract for its purchase at a price consistent with good quality without a need for a formal bid. That was previously one million. And so I did ask Purchasing, why did they, was there a reason for increasing the amount from one million to two million? Was that something in the law? Or did they, this was something in terms of their operation? And it is an operational, they feel that it would be better operationally because the cost of many, especially instructional materials have really gone up over the years. And so it's quite easy to hit one million dollars, and so that's why they wanted to increase it to two, two million dollars. So then, also, when the anticipated purchase price of specific instructional materials are equal to or more than two million, then the superintendent shall contract for its purchase with a responsible bidder who provides the best value through a formal bid. So that it's, you don't need a bid if it's below two million. You don't need to go through a formal bid process if it's below two million, but you must if it's above, if it's at two million or above. And again, they are, they have added the language, Purchasing has added the language that all contract actions within the category shall be reported to the board on a biannual basis. And then they have removed all the information about invitation for bids and for requests. And their comment on this is the reason why they did take this out, delete it, is because of the fact that you don't need to go through that process when you're talking about exceptions. So that's why that was taken out. Then the next thing has to do instructional and staff development contracted services. I don't think they made any changes in that area, except to say that all contract actions within this category shall be reported to the board on a biannual basis. So that's throughout the entire policy where they want to be able to provide a report to the board at least twice a year, that would explain all of the, anything that's happened contractually. So they, so as far as the, this, this, this exception on instructional and staff development contracted services, all of this remains the same. There's no requirement for formal bids for the purchase of instructional or staff development contracted services. And let's see, when anticipated purchase price of a specific instructional or staff development contracted services less than five hundred thousand, there is no need for a formal bid. And then when it, what they're saying is, Maryland law doesn't require a formal bid. Our policy is saying if it's, if it's less than five hundred thousand, then you don't need a formal bid. But if it's more, greater to equal or more than five hundred thousand, then you, it would go through the formal bid process. And then there would be an award and the contract must be approved by the Board of Ed. So and then any of the, you would already know about if you had to approve something that was five hundred thousand and above. But any of the actions for something that was less than five hundred thousand, you would receive information about that, again, in the biannual report. And I want to point out, I'm really sorry that you see these indents with this language. When they went in to make these changes, I'm not sure what happened, but I could not get most of this lined up. When it does get cleaned up, it will all be in alignment. But unfortunately, some of this got stuck over there and it just would not move over. So. And then the next exception is professional services. And so that is when there's an anticipated purchase price of a specific professional service that's less than two hundred and fifty thousand, then the superintendent's designee shall contract for its purchase at a price consistent with good quality without the need of a formal bid. But when, again, when it's above the two hundred and fifty thousand, then they, they would go through the formal bid process and the board would approve it. But again, anything that happened for the group below the five hundred thousand, any contractual action, that would just be reported to the board on a biannual basis. So then, purchasing description, that's just saying what, when you're putting out a proposal, what, including the specifications and making sure it's sufficient enough so that people know what they're going to put a bid in for or a proposal, and it's really meeting our needs. And then finally, it says the superintendent shall establish an administrative procedure implementing this policy. So I would say that probably that for, for you all as a board, and you're thinking in terms of operation, probably the biggest changes here have to do with, of course, with the law. The law has changed, which is the one hundred thousand from fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. And the fact that there would be, that you would not be learning about these contracts as they're happening for anything that's below that one hundred thousand mark. Instead, you would be receiving, you would be receiving a biannual report from the purchasing office. And then for, again, for your request for proposals, I mean, for exceptions, that increase, there was an increase there. And that went from one million to two million for instructional materials or supplies. So again, you would not be voting or approving on anything unless it reached that two million mark for instructional materials or supplies. And any contractual action that did occur that, under that one million mark, would be, you would receive a report about on a biannual basis. So that is it, and pretty much it. In a nutshell, I do, I can honestly say that if the purchasing director were here, I'm sure she could explain it in a little bit more detail, but I, this sort of gives you the nuts and bolts of the changes.
Thanks so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Colleagues, you will be recognized in the order of your race hand. If you can't digitally raise your hand, just let me know and I'll have you in queue. All right. See if there's any committee members first. Board Chair, McInnes Murray. Okay, all right, we can start off with Board Chair, McInnes Murray.
Thank you so much, Chair Briggs. Two comments. The first comment is, where is the approval authority captured, Ms. Welsh? And I understand that this is about operations, but can the superintendent designate, say, you to sign for a one million, two million dollar, whatever? I'm trying to see where there is codified, who has authority to sign within the operations? And if you don't have an answer for that, I mean, you come back later. Mike, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I was going to say this. So, of course, it's even in the law in terms of the responsibility of the superintendent to sign contracts. But of course, he can always designate that responsibility. I know in the past where it's been designated would be to the Director of Purchasing. And so, because a lot of contracts come through, so the Director of Purchasing would sign. I'm assuming that's the same, but I can certainly check on that for you.
Okay, I wish you would, because when I first came on this board, I understood that the director could sign up to two hundred and fifty thousand. But I thought it should have been a expert, a subject matter expert person, who at least authorized that. In other words, to see two signatures. But if the system doesn't see a requirement for that, then help me to understand why. Then you're reporting out biannually. Did they recommend which dates would be biannual in the school system? Because the school system, I mean, the date started in July, July first. So you're talking about Christmas? Or you're talking about when? When would those biannual reports be required? And then my other concern is professional services. When it comes to folks who were employed within the system, who leaves the system and comes right back with a professional services contract, I don't know if that, if this is the right place to capture whatever criteria is around that or if it should be someplace else. I'm just throwing these things out for you to think about, take back to the administration. And who is the Director of Purchasing, please?
It's Dan Erica Johnson.
Okay, and then when Ms. Johnson comes back, at least she will be aware of what my concerns are.
So, it's very, note that it looks like we lost a board member, so I don't think we have a quorum right now.
Oh, okay, we got it. Wait, then. I mean, we can't take any actions. We can.
Yeah, just like.
Yeah.
Well, do you think it would be a good idea to invite Ms. Johnson to the, to the next committee meeting to discuss, provide a little bit more detail and explanation and answer these questions? Chair McInnes Murray?
Well, it would be up to, board member Briggs, I mean, I can send my questions to her, you know. If, if the members of this committee don't feel that it needs, that she needs to come.
Yeah, she should bring it back. Those are questions we all want to hear, either put us all on an email. I think that they are fruitful questions to ask, that we should know the answers for. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Walsh.
Yeah, yep. And Mrs. Welsh, I think maybe we can talk about this. And actually, I want to see if I can just solicit questions from committee members. Because I would love for her to kind of come ready to speak to maybe some of the specific things that we'd want to hear, based on the policy in addition.
That would be good.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll send an email. I always do this. I'm going to send an email out tomorrow, soliciting from you all, if you can send me something by like Thursday. And then Welsh and I have a conversation every Friday, so we can talk about it.
And Chair Briggs, if you'll indulge me, Ms. Welsh, I had also thought about a cheat sheet for board members of what they should, can do and can't do. You know, like a one-pager, if she could think in terms of that, once this policy is approved by the board, that would be helpful. So that the board members will know, okay, in operations, you don't deal with two thousand, two million and above, or whatever it is. Just cheats. Thank you. Okay, so that's it.
Absolutely. That would be really helpful and good for onboarding as well. So thanks.
Yeah. I, I don't actually want to move forward without Dr. Miller, because I feel like we're going to get into a territory that's just so not sure, Cindy, if you could just maybe give her a call really quick and see what's going on.
Mr. Tracy announced, I believe, before you got on that she was driving, so it could be that she's in a bad area.
That's true.
She'll be rejoining shortly. She said she lost connection where she was.
Okay, great. Are there other questions on this specific policy while we're waiting? Well, so I'll just ask a few questions, Mrs. Welsh.
Okay.
Clarify, so the fifty K initially was that, to Judy's point, that directors could, they had a limit up to fifty thousand dollars where they could make purchases without having to get approval from, or put out a formal bid, right?
Uh huh. And that was for just equipment, materials, services, or supplies.
Got it. And now it's a hundred K for a formal, well, now it's up to a hundred K before there's a formal bid for it. Is there any other pieces? I don't, I didn't see anything in the policy around like approval from the board? Is there any other pieces? I don't, I didn't see anything in the policy around like approval from the board uh for above a hundred K?
So it does, I mean, it does say um that if it's a pack, if it's if whatever the package is, it's above a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand or above. Then it must go to be, the package has to be submitted to the board for approval. So the board would approve any of those contracts that are coming at a hundred thousand or higher.
A hundred thousand, same thing would be for same process for the two million and then the same for the five hundred K. Okay, got it. All right, um and then I think I see um Vice Chair Walker's hand.
Yeah, I did, actually, you you asked part of the question. When you, when you put that um one pager together, if we could also highlight, let me put myself on. If we could also highlight what the board chair has to sign off on, I think that'll be part of it as well. Um which instances the board chair has to sign off for any of the purchases as well. Think that's a um question mark for our Board of Education as well, thanks.
I agree, thanks, that's a good one.
Since we have time, I can think. Um Dr. Miller says she need, is asking for a pass code to get back in. Should I just send her my link or oh, I should tell her to go into her email, huh? Well, Cindy, um maybe you can tell her to go into her email only because I'm driving.
Yeah, I'm trying to reset.
If you want to resend it, okay, yeah.
You know, I was gonna say maybe text her it too, since she's, I know, I'm not sure she has access to her email.
You know, as we're talking about purchases, I think another good thing to do, well, we do have our own um budget review. Um but it would be good to just kind of maybe quarterly to have uh just an overview of what the the high level, maybe the top three purchases were in each of the different big categories. What do you think about that, um Chair McInnes Murray?
You know, I think that's good, um Vice Chair Walker, because I think, first of all, you're gonna have a new board. All elected, and I think it helps you to learn what you should and should not do. And it also helps you to think about, maybe you might need to do something differently, you know, once you see what is happening.
Yeah, I think with contracts. Yeah, I think it also gives billa- yeah, billability, visibility to some of our big contracts that we might not even recognize we're signing off on. Um anyway, so that might be helpful, just the top three, not to go through all of them, but maybe just the top three for each category.
Right, and it doesn't mean that the board is having to take action, it just means providing information.
Yeah.
Transparency, good idea.
Uh Mr. Whitley, clarification here. So can we move on to the next policy and then vote um on? We can't do that.
Yeah, uh uh I would recommend against it.
Yeah, no business without a forum.
Okay.
Discussions, but no business. Cindy has her hand up.
Well, I think this.
Question was discussion.
Yeah, can we discuss the policy with that without voting on this one? So could we move on to?
Once Dr. Miller gets back on, we'd come back and have further discussion and uh you you're the chair, but my recommendation would be that we wait until she gets back on. That way we have one conversation about it at one time.
Okay. Um Cindy.
I'm busy gonna see what Mr. Whitley said.
Got it, thanks. Okay, so.
Thank you, Cindy.
For Dr. Miller here. I am gonna say if she, if it's gonna be another, like, if it's gonna be past five forty, then I'm gonna say let's just move on to the next policy, have a discussion, and then um come back, ha- even though I I appreciate that 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 uh suggestion.
Yeah, but I understand this, uh Chair Briggs, she wouldn't be able to vote on it if she doesn't hear the discussion. So you you really want her, you want your quorum to hear all the conversation.
Um Chair Briggs, we do though have two items under discussion that there will not be voting, but say I might be her.
Yeah, the.
Dr. Miller is here now.
She's here, I see her.
Hypotheticals, okay, I guess we can get started. So um I'm gonna take uh any last questions on the purchase policy, um that Dr. Miller, you were here for the presentation on. Um so are there any other questions? Show of hands or you can come up and let me know. Okay, um so please be advised, this policy will be returned to the next P and G meeting for action. Any objections? Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Committee on Policy um thirty-three twenty-three. Have it brought back to the next P and G for act- uh for for action.
Can I just ask one question about that? Um so if in fact, um after she comes back and answers your questions and you may have different thoughts about what you might want to see in this policy, you might recommend some changes and stuff. So then I still end up having to take it back to OGC again and then through the superintendent. So I'm wondering, just because this is such an important, important uh policy that you are, you might want to just bring it back for discussion since it's only in two weeks. And she could then um answer anything and then you can make any changes to this policy that you would like to before it moves on back out for review by the OGC and by um um the superintendent.
Yeah, actually, you know, it's interesting, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start to split my uh interpretation of the the script that I have in front of me. So I think that further discussion is um appropriate for this one, I'm just giving it um. And and so I need to do some critical thing when I'm reading through these things. Um thank you for that. We're gonna move on to item four point two, policy fifty-one twenty-one, grading and reporting for elementary and secondary students. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on agenda item four point two, policy fifty-one twenty-one, grading and reporting for elementary secondary students.
So um this particular policy, uh and I did pull some language out of the old policy. Um um basically, the policy statements. Um but this is um talks about, um first of all, so let's just talk about the policy statement. It says that um the board does believe that all students can learn and achieve high levels, that rigorous performance standards and achievement stands standards are essential components of developing and delivering quality in instruction. And that regular assessment is an important component of any effective teaching and learning environment and an important tool in measuring student learning. Also, I have that the board is committed to ensuring that grading, reporting, and the process for grade changes are applied consistently in all and across all Prince George's County Public Schools. Um so that everyone is doing the uh as it goes, it really goes to equity, everyone is doing the same thing um in every school. And um and in the schools as well as across all our schools. And then the last thing is that the board student progress is reported in a manner that is understandable. Um um that's is committed to making sure that the progress is reported in a manner that is understandable. Students and their parents and guardian guardians and relevant for instructional purposes. So then the purpose of the policy is really to provide guidelines on standardized grading processes, reporting of the grades to parents, uh guardians and students, and then grade change authorization. I do want to let you know that we do have an administrative procedure that talks about grade change authorization. However, we do have, I have eh in their current AP on grading and reporting, it does not dr- address grade change authorizations. And we have no other policy that addresses grade change authorizations. However, if you look at COMAR, COMAR is very clear, uh the specific court uh um COMAR regulation that goes to grading and reporting, it's very clear, it has a requirement that the policy should also be addressing grade change authorizations. And when I went back to look at the APs, the the two, we have one on grading and reporting AP, and then we have one. It's actually three, because it's broken down by elementary, middle, and high school, but then we have one that goes to grade change authorization. And that policy actually does, I mean, that administrative procedure references this policy. So that's why I did add um some language related to grade change authorization, because it is in the regs anyway for us to do that. Um so the definitions are pretty clear cut. And then the standards, um it says that the superintendent or designees shall develop and implement grading and reporting practices that include the following. So uh the grading grades have consistent meaning within and among the schools to reduce performance variability and promote accountability. Grades are an accurate reflection of student achievement compared to um grade level or course expectations outlined in the curriculum as demonstrated on classwork, independent assignments, and multiple and varied assessment measures. And that students shall have the opportunity to earn grades that reflect their ability to demonstrate learning outcomes and be graded in accordance with their achievement on material and information based on specified learning outcomes and approved curricula. Also, at the beginning of each course, students and parents shall be provided a written course outline, syllabus, or overview of course expectations along with grading procedures, grading categories, and weight assigned to each category. And I think that's really important that our our parents um and our students understand how are they being graded and what are the eh expectations. Um and then it says also, and then this number five actually comes out of COMAR, that students and parent guardians shall be provided with an explanation of weights of honors, advanced placement, international, international baccalaureate, and dual enrollment courses. Again, this just goes to reporting to the uh parents, guardians, and students. And then um students, uh this this next one, number six, also comes from COMAR. It says students and parents guardians shall be provided information about how attendance factors into a student's grade. And then the last one, the student and parent uh parents guardians should be informed about the student's progress throughout the grading period. And then the progress should be reported formally at least every nine weeks. So we do have our our court, we have quarterly grades that go out, which are like every nine weeks. But it's still really important throughout that during that time period, not just, you just don't wait to the actual report card when it comes out. If there's concerns in a student's performance, it's really important for the schools to uh to be able to inform that the students and the parents and guardians, um if there's any concerns and where a student might be having difficulty. Then the second heart part has to do with developing a process for changing a student's grade, which includes, again, this is all from uh COMAR, a timeline for grade changes, names of staff positions authorized to make grade changes, documentation that is required to be ma- to be maintained, so to support a final grade uh changes. The auditing of the validity of the grade changes each year. So our our internal audit must audit the grade changes every single year and and send it to to the state superintendent. And then also appeal process uh procedures. Um and then it says the superintendent designees shall provide a copy of this policy to the state superintendent of schools, so they have to be on file. And then the superintendent shall submit a copy of the grade change val- validity audit to the board and the state superintendent of schools. So board members would receive a copy as well as the state superintendent of schools. So then I have that the board is directed to uh develop administrative procedures to address grading and reporting, and then an administrative procedure to actually address grade changes. And that's it.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um the floor is now open for discussion and comments.
Ms. Welsh, hi, um I don't necessarily have any modifications, because I think that you addressed it. But I get a lot of um emails from parents about the timing of grade changes and responses. And I think I heard you say that that'll be addressed inside of the policy, correct? And then the waiting, uh huh.
The administrative procedure.
Yes, and then the waiting, waiting, W E, yeah, G H T, um for the grades. As well, you mentioned that, correct?
Yes, is it, are there questions like that they uh they don't feel like it's been clearly explained to them? Or are they feeling like that the uh schools aren't following the procedures, do you know?
Um yeah, I do know, and there's a little of both, but primarily the first.
Okay, so we need to make sure that.
And I will find the emails and send them to you, I was just looking, but it's um a little tough now, but I will find the um the latest three that I just received so that we can make sure at least that um we're taken into consideration.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
And uh can we have the timer up just, uh I know that she was actually ahead of our time, but just wanna make sure we're holding each other accountable. Um Chair McInnes Murray.
Just real quick for clarity, I think I understood at some point in time, and I don't know if it has anything to do with this, is that all kids started out with a fifty percent something and their grades reflected that fifty percent towards whatever that grade is. Is that true? So I've read it somewhere.
So it's um it's, I'm assuming it's in the AP, I'd have to go look back and look at it. But what I do know is that uh many, many school systems have have moved over to this uh a way of grading. Actually, I think Prince George's County and State of Maryland is one of the last school systems to move over in this direction. So if you, if you do, and I'm not a mathematician, but if you were to do the math and you were look at how much.
Yeah, I then please, I know my time is going, I understand that. I just want to know, is it codified, if you're not gonna codify it in this policy?
I will check that.
Highlighted so parents can see it in the AP.
I am, I am almost, I'm sorry.
My final question is, when the superintendent designates who the, who has the grading authority? Is that through a document, and I understand that it's at a high level. So it could say teachers or whatever it is that he wants it to say. But is it a document or is it just understood or is it codified in the AP?
So oftentimes, the AP will say specifically who has that responsibility.
Okay.
In fact, uh we spent a lot of time going through AP saying, eh don't just say it has to happen, write about who is responsible for doing it.
Okay, that's helpful, I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you so much, Chair McInnes Murray. Um Mrs. Welsh, I want to recognize myself for a quick second. Um something I'm thinking, and I'm curious what your I, what your thoughts are here, is kind of overlapping this policy with another one that that exists. And I'm thinking about education equity, I'm not sure if this is, that's the exact one. But I just like grades as a um, you know, the the way that we measure student success, right? It depends a lot on um a lot of different factors. And so I would love for this to kind of tie into like that education equity piece, where it's like when we're talking about grades. Um they, of course, are culturally competent, right? They're relevant, they are responsive to the um the realities of our school district as well as like rigorous. And um and I'm not sure if there's something that's like in another policy that we should look at, but I would just love to. That's my piece on this is like around the um the the equity piece as much as it is around the academics.
So I I do have uh in terms of related policies, I do have, actually, I did put down educational equity. But I can also go through that policy just to look to see if there's any language that could um not say that we're gonna take that language and put it in here. But the idea of what it might be expressing could possibly be incorporated into this. I can, I can go back and look at the educational equity policy if that's what you're requesting.
Yeah, if 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 we could have that, if you could just, if there's an opportunity to bring that back to the next uh meeting that we have to just share what you see in there. I think I'll kind of formulate better my thoughts on this, but that was my initial thought. Um Vice Chair Walker.
Hey there, yes, my question is actually to you, um Chair. I I just want to make sure I understand, is is your thought to grade on a curve, for lack of a better word, with cultural awareness? Or what's your thought? I didn't understand what you were um.
In the bridge, okay.
Yeah.
What that was, can you just explain it a little bit more, because I didn't understand.
Yeah, uh like, so yeah, I appreciate that. And actually, I was, like, I was sharing it, I was like trying to think about what I was saying, but seeing the passes, like, sometimes um there have been school districts that have pushed back against grades, because they said that grades is subjective. And you know, an A, right, we may say an A is ninety to one hundred, a B is eighty to ninety, et cetera, et cetera. Um and I think that there's a way that some school districts actually grade students that is equitable. It takes into consideration like a number of different factors, it's not just about, um I think this kind of blanket like this is the standard. Um but it is, um it's evidence-based, research-based, and it takes in different indicators. So that's my thinking is, I would love for, if our policy, if our grading standard needs to be adjusted, and I'm not saying that that necessarily needs to happen. But if it did, um I'll give you one more example. So like there um there are some school districts that are like having color coding with their grades. So they may say an F is red, right? They may say an A is green and C is yellow, right? And so there have been kind of pushbacks on like, well, why does an F have to be red? Or why does a, you know, why is an A green? Are there ways that we can, because of the associations with the colors? Are there ways that we can make grading not like this um this, almost like this stain on students? Or this um this marker, right? Like, I think grades are important, GPAs are important, test scores are important, but we know that they aren't like the full picture of a student. And so I think that there is a way that school districts do frame it, where it isn't like, just because, you know, you have this score, this is who you are. And there's a way of kind of, I think, being more culturally, and I think just, maybe culturally is not the right word, but like sensitive to um interpretations of grades. And so that's something that I'd be curious to explore, and I think that policy would kind of help to maybe frame an introduction to such a, such such an idea if um that was something that we wanted to consider.
Okay, interesting, um I I think uh, you know, policy helps us set direction, but definitely getting input from.
but definitely getting input from Dr. White's team on challenging them to think out of the box on, on that, uh, evidence base. But yeah, I would be interested in seeing what the policy says because we don't want it to handcuff us. But I do think it's worth taking a look at. I'm not so much sure of the how that was explained, but I think it's, it's worth, uh, taking a look at.
Yeah, definitely. And I'll say that was like, uh, you know, that was an initial thought. So I think my, my biggest piece there for Welsh and for clarity is like, if we can look and see if there's anything in the educational equity policy, and then I need to form, uh, further formulate my thinking if there's anything there. Uh, but I agree. I think definitely touching base with Dr. White's team, et cetera, is really important. Um, Mrs. Welsh, did you have anything or are there other questions?
No, wow.
Okay, great. All right. So, um, please be advised that this policy will be returned to the next PNG, uh, committee for further discussion. Um, are there any objections? Okay, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the committee on policy fifty-one twenty-one. And have it brought it back, brought back to the PNG committee for further discussion. We're now going to move on to item four point three rollout for, uh, policy bylaws revision recommendations. And we're going to move to item four point four, school year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five committee work plan. So, Mrs. Welsh, I believe we have this agenda up, um, for our work plan for next year that we discussed. Um, so happy to, um, turn it over to you for a voiceover and then, and then I can chime in as well.
So, so just, um, so that you, well, the timeline, what we normally, so if you look at actually ninety-three forty, it talks about, um, first of all, they, um, the Board of Education coming up with, um, any of the, well, so first of all, any of the task force, any of the standing committees and anything can recommend policies to be addressed by the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And then the, uh, the board, board members themselves can also recommend different policies for, for the upcoming year to work on. And then the superintendent is responsible for providing a list of policies to work on for the upcoming year. So in the past, Dr. Golson did put together a list of policies that she would recommend. And then, um, and she usually provided those, I want to say the end of May, beginning of June, and then she would, and then also the board members, the committee would add policies to that list of ones that they wanted to do. And then from there, we would look at that entire list and make a decision on which ones. Because some, I, there were years where there were so many, there was no way we could have addressed all those in that year. So we would have to prioritize which were the most important ones. Um, oh, and one other area that we do pick up, and there has been a couple of laws that have, um, made to the governor right now, uh, bills that are made to the governor that actually require policies too. And those policies, th- those would be listed in the list of policies. So we, um, would start this process, put all these lists of policies. And then in June finalized as best as by, at the June meeting finalized the policy, what we think are the policies we want to work on for next year. Um, to the best, you know, you know, the best of, um, you know, what I can, but then bring it back in August where we would finally vote on it. You know, because things might happen over the summer. And I would suspect that for, for US board members, a lot of times it might just be related to different issues you have been dealing with, with different parents and stuff. You know, in your role as a board member, where you're thinking maybe that policy needs to look updated or revised. Um, if from the superintendent's perspective, in the past, I should say, I don't know how it'll be this year. But in the past, Dr. Golson was very committed to wanting to update these policies. And so I know one time Chair Briggs, you asked the question about, well, why did this policy come up and why did this policy? And almost always they were because they were so old and the whole goal was to get them updated. And so in the past, that has been, um, ha- made up the majority of the list of the ones that Dr. Golson would provide. I do not know, well, you know, how Mr. House will attack, attack it. But I do know we do still do have a good number of policies that are very out of date and need to be updated too.
Yeah. And before we, um, move on, I did want to just kind of give a voiceover for this, uh, specific document because this is something that, um, Robinson, Cindy and I kind of worked to put together for board members. The goal was really to have an opportunity to collect, one, of course, policies that you think should be up for revision or even new policies um, that you'd like to propose for the school district. But I think also additional rationale behind why you want to see that. So if there's something, let's say that the chair is like, hey, I was having this discussion with, um, you know, community members or business leaders about this specific thing, and I realized that there's a gap. We don't actually address this in a policy. I'd like to see this. Um, that's, you know, an example, or maybe you've just been like sitting with an idea for a while. And you really, you know, wanna, uh, you think it's a good time to bring it up. So this specific document will help us to track, um, what's happening for, um, Robin to kind of like have as we're going throughout the year and presenting all the different policies to kind of, uh, refer back to when she's thinking about what exactly the board member wanted to see changed. Um, and we're hoping that it's also like a, a way to kind of, um, really streamline this process. So that it's not like, uh, ad hoc, we're just kind of requesting things as we go, but really like we're being intentional about aligning on those policies from a number of different stakeholder groups and including board members, the administration, et cetera, et cetera. And then you can align with your stakeholder groups. Um, with that said, I do, unless Robin, you have anything else to share?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say was that, um, Cindy and I have, have actually already started a spreadsheet. And for like, for conversations that have occurred over this year where there's been, like, a good example would be the, um, the Special Ed Advisory Committee. That's one that needs to come back up. I think bullying and harassment is one. So we've been just, as we go, adding to it, just so we didn't forget which ones have come up as discussion items for this past year, so we could put it on the work plan for next year.
Yep. Um, so I see hands. Want to make sure if there are any committee members, um, before of course, uh, answering you. Board Chair. Okay. All right. Um, Board Chair, uh, McInnes Murray.
Uh, just a comment, uh, Ms. Welch, I think, isn't there a policy that sort of dictates the process? I appreciate the organizationals that you guys have, uh, are putting forward. But I thought there was a policy that sort of said that the, uh, at the time, the CEO and now the superintendent would make recommendations to us. And we have been adding in the past what board members needed to, cause I know, uh, we need to do the nine hundred series, you know, to incorporate the all of, I mean, the, uh, elected board. So I, I guess what I'm asking is, because you know, there's a group that of, of policies, do they need to fill out a form for that piece? Or the board members for each of those policies? Or can they say nine hundred? Uh, and feel free to jump in here, Ms. Lolita, Vice Chair Walker.
Yeah, I would recommend that we do not have to go. If we're looking at the nine thousand series, for instance, at the, uh, up, uh, uh, at our upcoming retreat, for instance, Robin. And so the goal is for us to break into groups and then kind of mock that up, how we see it, and then bring that to the policy and governance. And then maybe that's when it gets on the list for us to bring it to the meeting with some type of order. If that, if that's okay, you tell me what you all are thinking. I hadn't heard this until today. Uh, yeah. So maybe, what do you think about that?
So, so I think first of all, in question, in answer to, to Chair McInnes Murray's question, ninety-three forty actually describes the process. And so what Chair Briggs, Briggs was referencing, I think, is the part where it talks about board members can you give ideas, uh, suggestions, and it actually is then supposed to go to the chair of the committee as well as the chair of the full board saying this is the policy I, I would like for the, the committee to start working on. So that, yes, that, that's, you know, that's, that's one little piece that I was put together to address that piece at ninety-three forty. But good back to your question, I actually think the whole idea of looking at the bylaws and identifying, uh, which ones you want to keep, which ones you think are redundant. In fact, I recently had a conversation with Dennis and I said, you know, I, some of these, some of these bylaws are actually really, we don't need. I mean, they're redundant. They're like, they're not, I don't think they're functional for the board. So, um, I, I think that's a great idea for the board to work on that process because it's your form of governance of yourself. So I think that's excellent.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think just to answer, like, the process isn't changing. So to, uh, both of your questions, like, it's going to remain the same as far as like how we've collected information in the past. This additional piece, Lolita, if you were particularly like, I want to do the entire nine thousand series, what you said, um, then you could provide that rationale. Maybe you have like a few sentences of like why and what you want to see changed. Maybe it's not every piece. But I think that's the information that we often want to know and that we don't always know when the policy is coming up. So this is for that clarifier. Um, that doesn't sometimes exist from board members as to why they just make a request.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so much. Hey, um, Ms. Welsh, you know, what might be really helpful? Since you've already taken a skim through, is if you would, um, maybe outline some of the ones you think, just a list that you might think are redundant or that you think are like in order of what we should go through. Because we're going to have some help on that with Mr. Swift and then us getting in subgroups. And it'll help us to tailor our work when we do our, um, retreat follow-up.
Oh, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh. You are amazing.
Uh, and Mr. Willie, I think I saw your hand.
Uh, well, I, actually, you answered the question. I just wanted to make it clear that like with the nine thousand series, you would not have. I, I don't believe that your intention was to have the board member say, uh, by law nine thousand one oh one with a question, you could just lump them together and just give a brief synopsis.
Yeah, which was a great question because I think that was a clarification that we hadn't thought about, um, but is actually a real scenario. Um, Cindy.
I, I do have one question as I work on this tracker with Mrs. Welsh. Is the board planning to add the entire nine thousand series to the work plan for next year?
Um, so the goal is, the goal is, I will say, an overarching yes. And so in order to capture that work, Ms. Welsh is going to help us, which is amazing. Take a look at some things that might be redundant already. She's then going to look at just a couple of pieces that I said earlier, maybe help us to prioritize. And then we'll be able to, to knock that work out. And then I can give you a timeline once we meet. Uh, we haven't met yet to do the work, but I'm happy to provide a timeline. And don't forget, we still have to come to the Policy and Governance Committee. This is just because it's in excess of all of the things that we're just trying to get a head start on it. And then it still has to come through the same process that it goes through, first reader, second reader, all the things.
Yeah. And I want to say, and I, I think Cindy, if I'm understanding your question, because I know you were thinking about like more of the technical piece, which is like, we have a, we have a finite amount of policies that we can do in a year. Um, so if we have like, you know, twenty in just one series, that would of course really make it difficult for us to get through like all the other stuff. Um, so I think that that consideration is of course, like, we'll still have the process where those policies are introduced. But those will be whittled down, right? Based on a number of different factors, um, that happens every time. So, um, just for clarity sake, Lolita, because I think that that was our Vice Chair Walker, um, that was the, I think, question behind the question, if I'm correct, Cindy.
Oh, perfect. We're gonna, we definitely want to prioritize. So even if we work on more than we can handle here, then we'll just queue it up and put it in the right order so that it can come, um, for the effectivenesses of, of our own governance. No worries.
And that'll be a discussion either way. Well, I mean, the goal is like, with this really thoughtful process, there'll be a discussion that will lead and we can like help to really clarify. So that we're moving in a positive direction, uh, which it sounds like we're all on, on board with. Are there any other pieces here for this work plan piece? Okay, so the school year twenty-four, twenty-five work plan needs to be approved at the June eighteenth uh, meeting, uh, PNG meeting to be sent to the full board in the August meeting. So, um, we got a month. All right. So we're going to move on to, uh, item five point O, items for review or action. There are four items for review or action. Each discussion, uh, round will last two and a half minutes. We're going to move to item five point one, policy forty-one thirteen, community involvement in the principal selection process. The question is on advancing agenda item five point one, policy forty-one thirteen, community involvement in the principal selection process to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moving seconded. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy forty-one thirteen.
So forty-one thirteen has been revised to ensure that school-specific staff, parents, community members and high school students for the high school principals are informed about when a principal vac- uh, vacancy exists, the process for advertising, pre-screening, screening of principal candidate. And the le- leadership profile survey, survey, which stakeholders are encouraged to complete. Um, so that's an important piece of the policy. And then the second piece, it also addresses the interviewing process, which includes a school-specific interview panel made up by school-specific staff, parents, community members and high school students for the high school principals. And the panel will have the opportunity to interview the principal candidates and then provide recommendations to the superintendent about the preferred candidate. And then superintendent shall consider the candidates recommended for the principal position and make a recommendation to the board for the, for an appointment of the principal. And the Prince George's County Board of Ed shall then appoint the principal based on recommendation from the superintendent. So the whole purpose is to just ensure that we have our, um, our community as well as even, uh, school staff, people that are specific to the school, um, and know what the school needs and everything, and then your community, your parents. Uh, and for high schools, some students to be a part of this whole process for selecting, um, principals for the schools.
Great. Thanks so much, Mrs. Welsh. Are there any objections to advancing policy forty-one thirteen to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board, uh, with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're now going to move on to item five point two, policy sixty-one sixty-one, core curriculum resources. The question is on advancing agenda item five point two, policy sixty-one sixty-one, core curriculum resources to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry about that.
No problem. It's been moving seconded. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy sixty-one sixty-one.
So, um, the, um, uh, policy sixty-one sixty-one, um, has been revised to define the, the board's expectations for identifying appropriate textbooks and instructional materials to support the learning for all of our students. And a process also for accounting for all textbooks and related instructional programs. So, um, the policy, uh, requires a committee made up of instructional staff and community members as appropriate to, uh, review, evaluate and recommend the required textbook series and classroom instructional materials. And then based on the committee's recommendation and the chosen vendor, the board is responsible for voting to approve the textbook series and classroom instructional materials. The, the also, the policy is addressing the fact that there has to be a process in place and that would be the responsibility of the superintendent. Um, to ensure that every school inventories all their textbooks and instructional materials and keeps them in a secure location. And that at the end of each school year, that the principal then conducts a audit to ensure that, um, and documents the inventory to ensure that we know exactly, you know, how many textbooks, how many, whatever the instructional materials may be that are in existence so that we don't ever lose those. So that's put in the next row.
Okay, great. Are there any objections to advancing policy sixty-one sixty-one to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're now going to move on to item five point three, policy sixty-one eighty point one, evaluation and selection of classroom instructional materials, which is a rescission. The question is on advancing I, agenda item five point three, policy sixty-one eighty point one, evaluation and selection of classroom instructional materials, rescission to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Yeah, oh, second. It's so hard to.
No, it's fine. You're driving. So we appreciate it. Um, it's been moving the second day. I will now give the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy sixty-one eighty point one.
So this particular policy, um, it's really almost very, very similar to, um, the policy that, um, you all just voted on, which was the core curriculum resources policy sixty-one sixty-one. So we really had a redundancy in that both policies are talking about the same thing. They, the, uh, sixty-one eighty doesn't, the only thing it doesn't talk about is, um, making sure that you are, um, really inventorying all the, the, um, all of your textbooks and instructional materials. But it talks about the whole process of selecting the materials and ensuring that citizens are involved in that process. So, so to really, it's just an, uh, effort to clean up our policy so that we don't have the same policy with different numbers repeating itself. Uh, there's the recommendation to have this one rescinded since we already have a policy that's addressing these items.
Thank you, Mrs. Welsh. Um, are there any objections to advancing policy sixty-one eighty point one to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Now moving on to item five point four, policy forty-one eleven, employment recruitment, which is also a rescission. The question is on advancing agenda item five point four, policy fit forty-one eleven, employment recruitment rescission to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. It's been moving seconded. I will now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy forty-one eleven.
So, um, actually last year forty-one eleven came up as a policy to discuss by the committee. And then, and the, when the committee was discussing it, they, um, the, first of all, the policy itself just has language that talks, first of all, talks about like, um, a person must put in an application and they must have a resume and all these things. And so the committee felt like that was sort of, you know, that's not the job of a policy to have these details. And so the committee felt like that was sort of, you know, that's not the job of a policy to have these details in terms of the interview process. However, the policy also talked about the fact that Prince George's County Public Schools was an equal opportunity employer. And that there would not be employment discrimination, um, for applicants. And so the conversation back then was that we were going to update zero one two five nondiscrimination policy, which we have done. And that discrimination policy would address, um, uh, employment and, um, employing, you know, recruitment, employment, employment practices. And so we actually added a whole section into zero one two five that does go into great detail about the fact that. Uh, Prince George's County Public School and the board are as an equal opportunity employer. And that, um, they, we are, um, not gonna have any type of discriminatory recruitment practices going on. So now that that policy is actually, um, uh, May ninth, it's, which is on Thursday, it's a second reader. And it will be then ready to move forward for enactment. That, um, that in place, it's now time to pull policy four one one one, because we won't need it anymore. Because we'll have in place a policy that tells us, you know, that we are, that we are gonna have, um, a nondiscriminatory, uh, recruitment process in place.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um. Are there any objections to advancing policy forty-one eleven to the full board with recommendation to seek public comment? And just for clarity sake, Mrs. Welsh, on that last, that p- point that you were making, that was really to align with the federal law, the updates to that policy.
Uh, yes, and actually, that, that zero one two five has a lot of, um, a lot of stuff that has related to the federal law.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Um, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're now gonna move on to item six point O, committee recommendations, new business and governance. Uh, and there are none, so we're gonna move on to item seven point O, follow-ups and next steps. Um, and as far as follow-ups, which is item seven point one, um, follow-ups from the meeting will be addressed at the next planned policy and governance meeting. Um. Item seven point two is next steps. The next policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please continue to check the PGCPS board webpage for more information. Before closing and remarks, um, I want to turn it over to Vice Chair Walker.
And. Thank you so much. I just wanted to follow up. We had an action here, and I'm so glad Chair Mickens Murray, I'm sorry I haven't had a chance to touch base with you. We were gonna talk about the, um. Talk the ninety-day plan at the meeting and maybe I'll. Yeah, are we still gonna do that? Cause we have a draft, but you know what, the, the notion of. Yeah, that, I, what I wanted to say is that, yes.
As there is no ninety-day plan, so I just want to say that. What I will say is as soon as we get the response from the Attorney General. As to when the change over the sunset of the, um, elected, of appointed board. And the elected board will start, I will let everybody know. I just think that if, if you and, if you and I want to talk about what you believe should be in place. But I think it's sort of premature. So that is why.
This is the beauty of the ninety-day plan is that it, it, it's not for right now. It's things that we need to have in place anyway, regardless if it's December next year, three years from now. There's just some general things we just need to have in place. But my real question of where I was going before you answered was, there's, um, Ms. Welsh, I understand that there actually is a policy already. I gotta get what the policy number is. Somebody texted me and told me that there is a policy already for onboarding and offboarding that I didn't know about. So, uh, maybe it intertwines, but yeah, I'm happy to talk it offline. I just think that there's some work we could be doing now that we should be. Doing right now, and that's what our Policy and Governance Committee thought too. So, that's why I'm bringing it up in Policy and Governance.
I like the suggestion of, uh, if there is a policy that exists already, um, because I don't actually want to. Go around one that does exist or reinvent the wheel. So I think it's important that we figure that out. Um, I think we're past the ninety days, unfortunately, as you already know. Like, I mean, we're probably like closer to sixty days, but, um, Chair Mickens Murray, did you have something?
Yeah, let me say this. Since I've been on this board, I've not seen a policy. So unless there's something that is in the archive someplace. I mean, we've had board members come and go. I've not seen a policy, period. So, and even when I was on the, uh, all, uh, appointed board and they changed over to the all-elected board. I didn't see a ninety-day policy being either. So maybe it's something that might need to be created. I don't know, but I do not know if it's existence. So I want that out there because I don't want people misunderstanding and thinking that we're not doing something that we should be doing. No, this is, this is a new animal, and I think that we're doing the best we can with the information we have. Ms. Welsh?
So I did want to say that we did work on a policy this past year, um, for, um, uh, what's it called? Uh, board policy eighty-two hundred, professional development for, of the board. Um, and that actually has language in it, and I ca- I think it came from House Book ten seventy-nine, actually. It would had to do with all the professional development requirements. So it's not onboarding in the sense of a, a true onboarding. But what it does say is at the beginning of their term, each board member shall attend an orientation training and be provided with training materials that clarify the role of the board member. And the board office will make arrangements for the orientation training and the provisional related materials within one month of the term's commencement. Um, and then after that, it just goes into all the training that board, all board members, elected board members are supposed to be receiving. So that's the only thing I can, I can think of off the top of my head that even addresses like for new board, board members coming in. It's just that one piece about the, um, you know, the training in the very beginning.
So Vice Chair Walker, what I would suggest is we start with that policy when we have the retreat on June twenty-seven. Maybe that's when, if that's the only thing that's in existence, and then if other board members have some ideas at that time, capture them.
Sounds great. I've already put a draft. I've sent it to everybody, so I'm happy to resend it or bring it then. Um, but thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. All right. So we're gonna move to closing remarks from the chair and adjournment. Um, item eight point one, closing remarks and adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting, uh, and meaningful discussions around board policies. Um, truly is appreciated if you've joined us this evening. Um, and also thank you to all of our, um, just colleagues, you know, for, I think, a really efficient and, um, effective meeting. Uh, this is probably the fastest that we've had. They seem to have been marathons in the past, so I appreciate getting out before seven o'clock. That's a, that's a record right there. Um, the question is on adjourning, uh, the May seventh, maybe you're lucky, Chair Mickens Murray. Um, the question is on adjourning the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, Policy and Governance Meeting. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the time is now six twenty-two. The May seventh, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good evening.